Please join me to stand and face the flag for the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undebatable, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. At a regular meeting of the school board, we invite public comment during this part of the agenda. Anyone here tonight who would like to address the board should raise their hand and wait for me to call upon them. Is there anyone who would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we will proceed with the agenda. Can I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the October 2nd, 2019 regular board meeting? And a second?
A second.
Moved by Mr. Hansiger, seconded by Mrs. O'Toole. Any discussion on the minutes? Mrs. Bruden, would you please take the roll?
Ms. Garby.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Ms. Kansinger.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have board committee updates. Please provide a summary of the last meeting and what's pending, or just say no report. First is the audit committee, Mrs. O'Toole.
We expect to have a meeting.
Okay. The board policy committee, Mrs. Bros.
Our next meeting is Monday, from 1:30 to 3:00.
Mrs. Bruden, can you make sure that it's noticed with the times?
Yes. And we plan on, the agenda will include a follow-up to our crowdfunding policy, a conversation around ideas to provide extra funding for students needing the E requirements, as well as additional policy changes that come to us on a regular basis.
Next is the business advisory committee, and in place of Mr. Rankin, I'll give the report. Tomorrow, there's actually a business advisory council meeting that will be held at the ESC in northeast Ohio. We'll feature Brandon Kustowski, the founder of Edmunds Leadership and Restaurant Group. Any board members who have an interest should feel free to attend that meeting. The capital planning committee, there's no report. The board finance advisory committee, also Mr. Rankin, and as I understand, there's no report. And records retention, there's no report. Can I have a motion for special board recommendation 6A?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Bros, seconded by Mr. Hansiger. Want to read this? Give me a moment, let me do the content. So our resolution says, "Whereas, in each community, the public schools are shaped by the community, by that community, to provide the most appropriate and effective education for the schoolchildren who attend those schools. And whereas, public schools are dependent upon the community's support in countless ways, including supportive setting goals for the education of our children, and establishing successful volunteer and booster programs for the schools, for the funding of facilities and operations, and in the election of qualified school board members. And whereas, much of the community's knowledge and opinions about public schools depend on responsible reporting by local news media representatives, who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues, and what the tone of the reporting will be. Now therefore be resolved, that the Sugarin Falls Board of Education names, the Sugarin Valley Times Barbara Christian, Sugarin Valley Times Samantha Cottrell, Sugarin Valley Times Sarah Peacher, Cleveland.com and Sun newspapers Ed Wittenberg, Geoghan County Maple League John Carlebeck, and Geoghan News Sun Polly Stefan, to the 2019 OSBA Media Honor Roll. Calling attention to the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of reporting on this community's public schools. We express our appreciation for your balanced and accurate approach to sharing with this community both the challenges facing our schools, and the successes achieved by staff and students. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools that we can for every child who attends that.
I'd just like to add, Mr. Rankin, we're very appreciative of everyone in attendance tonight at the Mainland House. There's a relationship that develops between the media and school districts, and we're very fortunate to have very fair coverage, partners, and educating our community on the issues that we face and the accolades that we, really our students and our staff and chief, we're very appreciative of everything we do. And I think few people realize how many different assignments you all have, and places you must go to be able to keep up and accurately report and share as much information as out there is. Quite an accomplishment in and of itself. So, thank you very much, on behalf of the entire straight team. All good additions, all right.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Bruden, will you take the roll? And then we'd be glad if I could have you up to proceed with your different area. Mrs. Garby? Yes. Mrs. Bros? Yes. Mr. Kansinger? Yes. Mrs. O'Toole? Yes. You guys are cute. I'm sorry.
It's very, very nice. Thank you very much. This is a compliment. And also, as you're being listed. Thank you very much. Thank you. Excellent. Most of us. We're focused on the project. Go ahead. Thank you. Okay, we ready? We got everybody in there, one, two, and three. Thanks very much.
Yes. Can I have a recommendation for board recommendation 7A?
Seven.
And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Bros, seconded by Mr. Hansiger. Is there any discussion on this? So basically, it's appointing me to be the president pro temp for the first meeting of next year for organizational thing. Mrs. Bruden, would you please take the roll? Yes. Mrs. Bros? Yes. Mr. Kansinger? Yes. At this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Hunt to bring the support comments forward.
Have an X ring to it.
Thank you. Good evening. We've got three reports this evening. The first is an invite, High School President Monica Asher to interview some of our high school students. It's a pretty amazing accolade to become AP Scholar or Monica Will Talk, where the application on attendance through some qualifications that need to be achieved and be recognized. I would tell you, since 2015, we had 42% of our student body completing AP exams. In 2019, 50% of our high school student body participated in the AP exams. 2015, 83% of those students had a 3 or higher passing score, and in 2019, only 8%. So we've increased the number of students that are taking exams, and then we've improved the passage rate, and that's a combination of double the big, very, very talented students that are receiving here today, and a very committed staff that's working double the way. So, at this time, I'd like to do this, Miss Asher, to talk us through these reports.
Good evening, and thank you to students and families for joining us. As Dr. Hunt just said, one of the things that I am particularly proud of is the fact that we have increased access to this rigorous coursework while maintaining a high level of academic integrity and increasing outcomes. So I'm really proud of the work that these kids have done, and really, really proud of the tremendous education offered by our staff as well. So what we will do is, we're going to go through each one of the AP Scholar Awards. We will announce the students that are in attendance and RSVP for this evening, although we do have all of the students listed on the PowerPoint. What I will ask is that we are going to take a picture at the end, so if all students could stay standing up here until we're finished, that would be terrific. So the AP Scholar Awards recognize high school students who have demonstrated exemplary achievement on AP exams. So students who are among the few who qualify for the capstone diploma, students who earn scores of 3 or higher in AP Seminar and AP Research on four additional AP exams of their choosing, receive the AP Capstone Diploma. And so that is one of the, we are now in our fifth year, I believe, of offering the AP Capstone Diploma. I know we have one student who earned that, and she will be here a little bit later. So we will announce her when she, actually, she'll be coming up here shortly when she's announced for another award as well. So our AP Scholars, this designation is granted to students who achieve a 3 or higher on at least three full-year AP exams. This year, 55 students at Sugarin Falls High School were named as AP Scholars. The students in attendance tonight, Ryan Brackett, Jackson Quinn, and Eddie Scott. The AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who achieve a 3 or higher on at least four full-year AP exams and whose average of the AP exam grade is at least a 3.25. This year, 21 students at Sugarin Falls High School were named as AP Scholars with Honor. And none of them are here at the moment, but congratulations. AP Scholars with Distinction are granted to students who receive a 3 or higher on at least five full-year AP exams, and whose average AP exam grade is at least a 3.25. This year, 21 students at Sugarin Falls High School were named as AP Scholars with Honor. And none of them are here at the moment, but congratulations. AP Scholars with Distinction are granted to students who receive a 3 or higher on at least five full-year AP exams, and whose average AP exam grade is at least a 3.25. This year, we had 88 students named as AP Scholars with Distinction. These students are, and the first one that I will announce also is a recipient of the AP Capstone Diploma, and that is Sasha Gaines, The AP Scholar with Honor is granted to students who achieve a 3 or higher on at least four full-year AP exams and whose average of the AP exam grade is at least a 3.25. This year, 21 students at Sugarin Falls High School were named as AP Scholars with Honor. And none of them are here at the moment, but congratulations. AP Scholars with Distinction are granted to students who receive a 3 or higher on at least four full-year AP exams and whose average of the AP exam grade is at least a 4.25. This year, 21 students at Sugarin Falls High School were named as AP Scholars with Honor. And none of them are here at the moment, but congratulations. AP Scholars with Distinction are granted to students who receive a 3 or higher on at least five full-year AP exams, and whose average AP exam grade is at least a 3.25. This year, we had 88 students named as AP Scholars with Distinction. These students are, and the first one that I will announce also is a recipient of the AP Capstone Diploma, and that is Sasha Gaines, We do have two other students who were not able to make it, but we do have their families up here in the front if they would like to accept their awards on their behalf, Parker The National AP Scholar is a designation granted to students who achieve a 3 or higher on at least eight full-year AP exams and whose AP exam grade is at least a 4.0. And this year, 18 students qualified as National AP Scholars. One of the things that's really remarkable about this is we typically see students who are recent graduates as the only ones who have really qualified for this award. And this year, we had five students who are current seniors who qualified for this award. It's really, really tremendous, so congratulations to those students as well. So as we've talked a little bit earlier...
I think one of those students is my eighth year recipient.
Is Anna Hannah?
She's on her way.
Oh, she's on her way. So Anna Korkin is, she's on her way, but she actually received three awards tonight: AP Scholar with Distinction, a National AP Scholar, and also the AP Capstone Diploma. So as was said earlier, this year, 191 Sugarin Falls High School students qualified for this honor, which is an increase from the 188 students last year and 144 in 2017. So as we said earlier, we've increased access, but also increased achievement. And we are incredibly proud of these students for all of their hard work, as it demonstrates not just a commitment to academic excellence, but responsibility, grit, perseverance. We are really proud of even proud to have you as representatives, so congratulations.
All right, guys. Girl.
Who else is in there? They're going to need two rows up here.
Come on over.
Basically, we want to see you. Yeah. One, two, and three. Thank you. So, once again, I'd like to congratulate our students. It's a tremendous accomplishment, the amount of time and energy. I also want to thank our parents. There has to be a level of support and help for students to achieve this high level. Although I would agree, collectively, by huge, we're working it out tremendously. I am going to allow the students to, who are certainly welcome to stay, but if there are AP tests or things you need to prepare for in the finals, that is certainly understandable as well, so thank you. I'd like to move to AP on the agenda. Invite Ryan Schmidt, board and T. Gil, as the board application notes, Ryan, just retired listening with the district over the last year and a half on a clear master plan, which we presented at our last meeting. He unfortunately wasn't in attendance to hear all of the positive comments the board had about the work that he has done. And I would tell you that, you know, Ryan is a very creative person who looks for the best option to lead the new school district, but he's not one that designs to create some kind of monument, or a direct approach. And I also hope, you know, we point out that he's a parent, and a parent at Sugarin Falls High School is really great, and adds to the table as well. So I did want to take a moment to thank you, Ryan, for everything you've done for the school district over the last year or so. Tonight specifically, Ryan is here to talk about two projects, the Sugarin Falls Tennis Court Project, a proposal that I'm recommending to the board later this evening, and the additional proposal for designing one of the maintenance and transportation facility. So I know there's probably questions, and we can open it up, but I think we, let's start with tennis courts, and that's why I'm just talking timeline first, to answer those questions from the application. So maybe reorient us in terms of where the recommended location would be, and then talk us through timeframe and process, if you will, and we'll kind of take it from there.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? All right. If you have any questions, or any questions, just feel free to interject, but what we have essentially, essentially, there are a bunch of locations we looked at, and we're looking at the tennis court location. We did vet the entire facility to look at the best location for them, and ultimately, it came down to a measure of weighing the pros and cons of each location. So first look was obviously at the current location where it had been located in the past, but what we had seen with that was that was really choking off a large portion of the parking that was up at the front of the site. Really, a big push in the design, the master plan of the site circulation was to collectively put all the student parking together in order to separate that from some of the bus and parent traffic, and to also free up additional parking for use of the stadium, for use of the Formy Arts Center, and the high school itself during big events, and things of that nature. So that location really kind of negative score, that location, is it's kind of breaking up the campus as well. The second location we can paint down at the bottom.
Ryan, how many student spots do we need to give up in order to put them back in the original location?
That is a good question. I'm using the back six to nine minutes. I'm saying about six to eight spaces, something of that danger up there. I could be a little bit further than that, technically, figured for our search. The second location we looked at is a nice big piece of land on the site that's been collapsed, which was down at this end of the site. That required a lot, site manipulation, more storm, rainage, increased size of the extension basin, and it also put it way far into the site and kind of broke down, which is turning into a really nice practice area at the end of the site. So there were a lot of cost challenges, and then just proximity issues and things of that nature. The last place we looked at was this location here, which is our preferred location. It is right out front of the middle school. The benefit of this location is that it does keep it close to the school still, it maintains the parking up near the front of the site, maintains the student parking, assembled parking areas, and does allow all of the tennis courts to be contiguous and right next to each other. That was one of the big kind of marching orders in this whole discussion, was to get the tennis courts together. There have been discussions about possibly doing three here and two up at the top location. The challenge with that is just monitoring of the tennis program when it's in use. You can't really have coaches running a couple hundred feet, you know, between the areas to get from spot to spot, so that was a bit of a challenge of that. So, pricing-wise, putting it back in the old location is the most costly, because this is right behind it. There aren't a lot of existing asphalt at that location, so it's a bit of a swap for some of those things. This is a little bit more, I guess we do have to do a little bit of earthwork to the side, the edges, but it does maintain those other features that we have, and this was considerably more expensive.
So what's the difference between the old location and the new location?
The cost difference, probably tens of thousands of dollars. It's not a hundred thousand dollars, but I would imagine it's anywhere from 20 to 40 thousand. But it's, this is, the trick wrong with that is, this part of the lot at some point will require some additional improvements. There was some work done, this area, and some steel tubing done, but that part of the lot will need some repairs anyway. So some of the area that's being disrupted, ultimately, will be repaved at some point anyway, so there's a bit of cost exchange as well. So I don't think it's quite clear that we've got this good access. As far as the timing standpoint goes, the most critical item to get done was survey of the site, and that is underway, having the surveyor go out later and check on things, make sure we get all the grades and understand the site as it exists. I believe we have a pretty comprehensive idea of that northern area, and then he's giving additional information, just so we know what's on the site. Next thing that will need to happen in the next month or two would be to put it, this is all assuming a fall works, so. Next thing that would need to happen would be geotechnical drawings, and that's just really look at your ground assembly, because there's tops that'll obviously be in play, things of that nature underneath the ground, and you just don't know exactly what you're going to get. Since we're proposing a location that we consider to be pretty good, because we have existing parking areas, not showing any significant failures, we would assume the ground would be pretty good, but you just need to check. And then the next thing that would happen would be design. So the design process, essentially, it's a pretty straightforward project. No matter where we put it, it would probably be about a two-month process, a little bit of time at the end, just for final coordination with the school, and obviously, you need sort of work to be doing outside of this, or, and then there's a bit of process, which generally takes two to three weeks, a little bit more if you would like, and then the construction schedule would happen. Construction in northeast Ohio for tennis courts is something that you're probably not starting until April, just because of weather anyway, and it's generally, in our experience over the last couple of years, spent a lot of work on the process to get it, so. Just real quickly too, because tennis court is something that's different, if you haven't seen it done, we're going to do a ton of work right up front, we're going to get it built, we're going to get the asphalt down, it's going to put black and shiny and done, and then it's just going to sit there for a month, and everybody's going to ask what's going on. The asphalt needs to cure for a month, so that schedule's really kind of extrapolated by that extra month that you have to put the asphalt to cure, so. And then there'll be a scramble at the end, but get it done before possible. And then, but assuming that we hit all those kind of marks over the next few weeks, month, conceivably, we can be in by the end of August, as long as our hiccups with the schedule and things of that nature. So the schedule is still very doable at this point, but if it starts to drag down much longer, it could be something that might run into fall. I don't think we're in any danger of weather at the back of this yet, it generally works until it's early October possibly, so.
So the tennis program starts early August, so we would have to have alternate plans for the beginning of August?
I would not promise that you can be in by early August. We could strive for that, but I would have had a business plan for that just in case, just because of the likelihood of it. Nothing ever goes perfectly, you can always assume there's going to be something that causes a little bit of a regular hiccup, but, and just where we're starting, my schedule, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make up that. So it's something to look ready to school. The completion made up, the end, the trick you run into is just having bidders want to get it, because it might become something that just seems too daunting, so it'll be something that we have to weigh. We could talk over with a couple of those companies that we've done and worked with in the past, just to kind of get that cringe a second, with that kind of process. Yeah.
In your experience, when are most of these hitting the streets for bid?
In the next couple of months, first few months of the year. So everybody's striving for that, you know, August, September, inflation may, so generally, most people understand that you can't get started much earlier than that, they will, it's just, it's just crazy. Even then, there's still a chance that there's some bad weather around that time as well, so. But really, the weather driven up until that point, once they get started, there shouldn't be a problem.
Is this plan excluded to a tennis court like yours, or do all our others?
The topic, or the discussion with that is, they would be potentially repurposed in a way, they could always serve as tennis court or things of that nature, which are potentially used in for kind of multiple sports as well. I don't know if anybody's familiar with basketball courts that are maybe what you want, so potentially, you could add basketball or something of that nature, potentially using multiple things rather than just solely tennis. I mean, ultimately, long-term, you could do a bunch of different things with that location, but I don't think it's a bad feature to have.
At the moment, it's being left alone.
At the moment, it's being left. So minimally, we would do, if you've done this before, internally, do some crack filling to talk to the rec, if there's an interest in having those courts open before tennis lessons, which they could do, at least give that task loaded back for the program this year, and then obviously, some of the courts are open, but we could begin this conversation on, was the future of that space available?
Has the rec committed to absorbing, I mean, the costs, ongoing maintenance, or are we, district retaining the court? It's described as though we're giving that to the rec, and they're going to be able to use it for dodgeball, or basketball, or, but if we're keeping it, there's an additional expense that district has to take.
Yeah, to be clear, the rec is not committed to taking the cost of that, or, I think we all need to sit down and, once this decision is made in that installation, some other way, kind of talking about the future of that area, what's like if it becomes, I know in the short term, it's our, maybe we're going to get these two courts back here, the benefits to the rec, the benefits of community use as well, brings that back to the site. The future of that site, you know, there are some things that could benefit our programs here in terms of additional athletic and basketball spaces of that future, but we have gone down.
Parking that was up at the front of the site. Really a big push in the design, master plan of the site circulation was to collectively put all the student parking together in order to separate that from some of the bus and parent traffic and to also free up additional parking for use of the stadium, for use of the Formy Arts Center and the high school itself during big events and things of that nature. So that location really kind of the negative score of that location is it's kind of breaking up the campus as well. The second location we could paint down at the bottom.
Brian, how many student spots do we need to give up in order to put them back in the original location?
That is a good question. I'm using the back six to make this. It's about sixty eight spaces to some of that danger out there. I can be a little bit more than that type of figure for our search. The second location we looked at is the next big piece of land on the site that's been in class, which was down at this end of the site. That required a lot, site manipulation, more storm, rainage, increased size of the extension basin, and it also put it way far into the site and kind of broke down what was turning into a really nice practice area at the end of the site. So there were a lot of cost challenges and then just proximity issues and things of that nature. The last place we looked at was this location here, which is our preferred location. It is right out front of the middle school. The benefit of this location is that it does keep it close to the school still, maintains the parking up near the front of the site, maintains the student parking, assembled parking areas, and does allow all of the tennis courts to be contiguous and right next to each other. That was one of the big kind of marching orders in this whole discussion was get the tennis courts together. There have been discussions about possibly doing three here and two up at the top location. The challenge with that is just monitoring of the tennis program when it's in use. You can't really have coaches running a couple hundred feet, you know, between the areas to get from spot to spot. So that was a bit of a challenge of that. Pricing wise, putting it back in the old location is the most costly fact that this is right behind it. We're on a lot of existing asphalt at that location, so it's a bit of a swap for some of those things. This is a little bit more, because we do have to do a little bit of earthwork to the side, the edges, but it does maintain those other features that we have, and this was considerably more expensive.
So what's the difference between the old location and the new location?
The cost difference, probably tens of thousands of dollars. It's not a hundred thousand dollars, but I would imagine it's anywhere from twenty to forty thousand. But it's, this is, the trick wrong with that is this parking lot at some point will require some additional improvements. There was some work done, this area had some steel probing done, but that parking lot will need some repairs anyway. So some of the area that's being disrupted ultimately will be repaved at some point anyway, so there's a bit of cost exchanges. So I don't think it's quite clear that that was the best. As far as the timing standpoint goes, the most critical item to get done was survey of the site, and that is in a way having a survey or go out later and check on things, make sure we get all the grades and understand the site as it exists. I believe we have a pretty comprehensive idea of that northern area, and then he's giving additional information just so we know what's on the site. Next thing that will need to happen in the next month or two would be to put it, this is all assuming a fall works through the way. Next thing that would need to happen would be geotechnical drawings, and that's just really look at your ground assembly, because there's tops that'll obviously leave a play and things of that nature underneath the ground, and you just don't know exactly what you're going to get. Since we're proposing a location that we consider to be pretty good because we have existing parking areas, not showing any significant failures, we would assume the ground would be pretty good, but you just need to check. And then the next thing that would happen would be design. So the design process, essentially it's a pretty straightforward project. No matter where we put it, it would probably be about a two-month process, a little bit of time at the end, just for final coordination with the school and obviously any sort of work to be doing outside of this. And then there's bid process, which generally takes two to three weeks, a little bit more if you would like, and then the construction schedule. Construction in northeast Ohio for tennis courts is something that you're probably not starting until April, just because of weather anyway, and it's generally, in my experience over the last couple of years, spent a lot of work on that process to get it. So just real quickly too, because tennis court is something that's different. If you haven't seen it done, we're going to do a ton of work right up front. They're going to get it built, they're going to get the asphalt down, it's going to put black and shiny and done, and then it's just going to sit there for a month, and everybody's going to ask what's going on. The asphalt needs to cure for a month, so that schedule's really kind of extrapolated by that extra month that you have to put in there for the asphalt to cure. So and then there'll be a scramble again, but get it done in the long term, possible. And then, but assuming that we hit all those kind of marks over the next few weeks, month, conceivably we'd be in by the end of August as long as there aren't a hiccup, so the schedule or things of that nature. The schedule is still very doable at this point, but if it starts to drag on much longer, it could be something that might run into fall. I don't think we're in any danger of weather at the back of this yet. It generally doesn't work until it's early October, possibly.
So the tennis program starts early August, so we would have to have alternate plans for the beginning of August?
I would not promise that you begin by early August. We could strive for that, but I would have to have a business plan for that just in case, just because of the likelihood of nothing ever goes perfectly. You can always assume there's going to be something that causes a little bit of a regular hiccup, but and just where we're starting, our schedule, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make that up. So it's something to write in the school. The completion made up, the end, the trick you run into is just having bidders want to get it because it might become something that just seems too daunting. So it'll be something that we have to weigh. We could talk it over with a couple of those companies that we've done and worked with in the past just to kind of get that cringe a second, with that kind of press cycle.
In your experience, when are most of these hitting the streets for bid?
In the next couple of months, first few months of the year. So everybody's striving for that, you know, August, September, inflation may. So generally, most people understand that if you can't get started much earlier than that, they will, it's just, it's just crazy. Even then, there's still a chance that there's bad weather around that time as well. So but really, the weather driven up until that point. Once they get started, there shouldn't be a problem.
Is this plan excluded to a tennis court like yours coming up at all, regardless?
The topic or the discussion with that is they would be potentially repurposed in a way, they could always serve as tennis court or things of that nature, which are potentially used in for kind of multiple sports as well. I don't know if anybody's familiar with basketball courts that are maybe what you want, so potentially you could add basketball or something of that nature, potentially using multiple things rather than just solely tennis. I mean, ultimately, long-term, you do a bunch of different things with that, that location, but I don't think it's a bad feature to have.
At what moment should we leave them alone?
At what moment should we leave them alone? So minimally, we would do, if you've done this before, internally do some crack filling to talk to the rec, if there's an interest in having those courts open before tennis lessons, which they could do, at least give that task a little bit back for the program this year. And then obviously, it's a new course open up, we could begin this conversation on what is the future of that space.
Has the rec committed to survey? I mean, the costs, ongoing maintenance, or are we district retaining the court? It's described as though we're giving that to the rec and they're going to be able to use it for dodgeball or basketball or, but if we're keeping it, there's an additional expense that the district has to maintain?
Yeah, to be clear, the rec is not committed to table that, the cost of that, or I think we all need to sit down and, once this decision is made and that installation is in a way, kind of talking about the future of that area looks like it would become, I don't know, in short term, in the summer, maybe we're going to get these two courts back here that benefits the rec, it benefits the community use as well, brings that back to the site. The future of that site, there are some things that could benefit our programs here in terms of additional athletic and basketball spaces of that future, but we haven't gone down to do it.
It's just from the board perspective and considering the cost, given what we know lies ahead of us for ten years, the idea, like, it's wonderful to say, let's table this and come back to all the great things we could do with this space, but what I need to understand is what is the scope of what this future cost of this space would look like? What's the least amount it will cost us?
If you're talking, if you're talking about that tennis court area that's like that, if you just totally, just repair the surfaces there, I mean, you're probably looking in the range of thirty to fifty thousand dollars, you know, and that's something that I don't think you need to go that substantial at this point. I think you got minor repairs and things like that, but when you get to that point where you're doing a resurface, that's generally what it might be a little shy at that.
How often do the court tennis courts get resurfaced?
I think ideally seven to nine years, something like that. Most off the board are finishing this area for more than five to six years usually, so, and everybody makes the last one.
When's the last time we resurfaced?
I don't know. They've been repaired probably eight or nine years ago, but and we've done some real minor repairs since then. It's been a very long time since they've been actually resurfaced.
And you're talking about resurfacing that four tennis?
Four tennis are mostly, essentially the surface material that you put down on top, it's an acrylic based product, it'd be the same grade, so I would use that same product. Then it's a matter of how you strike it, you add, actually recommends things of that nature, but by the way, you're ahead of the curve with that, that kind of design.
So would there be an economy of scale to have that done at the same time we're finishing the new tennis courts?
A little bit, yeah. I mean, essentially, anytime you can group projects together, you save on overhead profit, those sorts of things, as they're related to mobilization of the contractors, you know, showing out the state, all those kinds of things cost money, many costs, so you would save some, it's not huge dollars, but it's in, probably in two hundred thousand dollars depending on the score.
So is it fair to say that the cost of this recommended location on the tennis courts would be, we saw it at five hundred and forty thousand dollars of steam earmarked in our budget, plus up to thirty thousand dollars for the rec courts?
Yes, and the way we could purchase two, I mean, we could do a bunch of those amalgam nets and stuff like that. So if you wanted to look at that area ahead and just sort of take through that surface, but then you can alternate it for that. And then you could choose to do it now or not, because, I mean, we're not going to come into you with our level number, so we're going to give you a number that we feel comfortable with balancing out for this project. So conceivably, if it's lower than that, you potentially get more work done here for some chose.
Again, I guess my concern with that is you're not talking about making a decision on what the future of that space is without that.
I think Brian, just the rest of the surface would be the same regardless?
Which has declined.
Sorry.
You have declined the surface.
That's true. So for example, if you strike it for basketball courts or, you know, tennis or any of those other sports, the striking would be different. It's not something that you're going out blacking it out like you see on the street. It's something that once you put it down, it's there with the duration of the paint, and once you put it down, it's something that essentially lives with you as long as that has, because we never told it those way, you're going to re-strike it over the top.
Could you surface it, that strike it, like, could you just not choose to strike it?
You could choose not to strike it, and there would just be a big blank area. You could...
Would it be more costly to strike it than what you decided to do?
No, I mean, there'd be a negligible cost. I, I don't, I don't know that I would push that ahead unless it was, or how you ultimately want to use it. My recommendation with that would be to take it, put it in, because the first reason you need to do, and that's in the asphalt, for example, you want to change the stanchion to move things around, then all that money you put in is kind of forgotten. So I would, I would have a pretty solid plan for how you want to use that when it comes to that point. Great, but we can't, and again, this is something that you're holding on to for twenty, thirty years, something that magnitude, so I get it, right? You know, rather than rushing ahead, the amount of money you're saving, I don't think is that considerable, and to have to go back and find something that you choose better for that time.
Is it possible to parallel path that over the winter months where we're having conversations and, and so we're queuing it up to have it constructed at the same time?
We can, and that's what I was kind of thinking as we were kind of having this out, is that we could be going that way, and we decide at some point, but, oh, right, but we're not there, we don't feel like this is, we have no idea of what this should be, then we just pull the plug on that part of it and we just do tennis court portion, and then if it is that in the future, we're going to put it there. I mean, that's something too that is so separate to the rest of the campus who've done it in one.
Right, as long as it doesn't impact the rec's program.
True, true, true.
Well, I just, I don't want to kick it down the road. I think we've seen the disrepair of the courts, they certainly, those two courts are really used quite a bit by, by our students and other community members. I, I'd like to put it all together, and to me, it's one, one solution to, to tennis courts on our campus, and whether they're multipurpose, so if we can move forward with conversations about what to do with the rec courts, and in my opinion, I think it should be grouped together and not just left, it's something that might happen down the road.
Well, and also because we have this master plan now, we know what is down the road, and I don't like the idea of just like parking lot, this. Because the truth of the matter is if it's really in the parking lot and we're, and it's not going to make it into this master plan, then it's a ten-year parking lot, and then we probably should consider doing something more like that tennis-wise of the time.
Don't disagree. Yeah, remember the original proposal was to move the courts and asphalt that whole area. I think we all see value in potential, yeah.
To turn the whole into a park?
Yes, that was the original recommendation. So we're, I think we, we see value in that space. Not, and this isn't the rec, I think there's value from a school perspective as well that would cause me to say that I don't want to turn that into a parking lot right now. One, I don't think we need it, and two, I think this space would be used in a different way.
Yeah, I think we've seen the parking cities, eighty percent of our juniors and seniors will have a dedicated parking space, which to me is probably, in my opinion, more than what many schools would be putting forward, so I don't think we need to create any additional parking for students.
No, I think that approach, you know, keep having the conversations, like, it's, it doesn't hurt us from where you're going to to try and figure that out, you know, and if we get to the point where it's going to be a nuisance for, you know, potential of getting tennis courts done on time, we can always run those.
Right, you know, I should, I totally agree. We, we don't want to sacrifice what the tennis team needs. I mean, there, there are often economies, and there are good reasons for us to not delay the repair of the rec courts.
There's just disruption.
You could, you could, you could phase, by the sounds of this timeline, you could phase this in a way that's the same rolling for everything. You could focus on the first five, allow the two courts that, you know, serve the rec and serve the community throughout the summer, our tennis team, I know it's only two, but there's at least courts on campus, and then as you're finishing up the five, move to the two.
Potentially, but the only challenge with that is surfacing through and the asphalt areas are a little bit, so it's nice that you can do...
My goal to make sense.
It still doesn't, it's not off, it's, it's so awesome.
Brian, the location for four, I have concerns that it's opening a can of worms, that it's just going to be unidentified issues with visibility of the ground, runoff. Can you talk to us a little bit about what needs to happen in terms of existing trees being taken down, and if we have conversations with the...
I'll be here in my, this was, you know, just talking about this, site utilization statement, but essentially, the disruption of the trees and the edge of the site, this is a bad, is, see, I think everybody's got a picture in their head of this dramatic beam off the side, and it is there, it's just a little bit further to the edge of the site. Or imposing with tennis courts, essentially the way they get built is there's a curved concrete system around it, there's a new stone basin underneath it, and you put asphalt down for people to run, they're not driving cars on it, they're not driving trucks on it, so the load impact after they've gone and it's built is very minimal. So the thought of sinking or things of that nature, I'm not terribly concerned about it. Our civil engineers are going to go out on a limb and hand all the cliffs, so they were comfortable with this positioning of it, the top graphical information that we had from the GIS surveys, so they felt that that was acceptable in order to put in something that's going to accomplish a plant and not cause to say, oh, we're pushing additional rules, things of that nature. So I'm comfortable with the way it's laid out for those reasons. And then, I mean, as far as our setback goes, I mean, you didn't mention any closer to the edge of the site, a couple of spots that are already there, so I think our setback is still fairly reasonable, and would, and our intention would not be to disrupt that, you know, anywhere from the ice.
What about runoff and the additional asphalt covering?
We wouldn't, we wouldn't have any additional runoff. So the, the way we would typically do these is that they drain to a central location, probably in between the two courts or off to one of the sides, and there'd be a big flacker there. So anything that we have, we're not pushing down the hill. We'd actually bring it back to this basin, so we'd be carving out a touch more in that basin to make that a little bit bigger and accept that water. We're not allowed to add to that, that runoff down that hill, so that's future in a way that you're considering.
Suitable soils, we had that issue with the back parking lot, and had quite a bit of expense to the construction there, and I know that hasn't been done yet, but isn't that a potential risk as well?
Anytime...
Since you're in an organic...
Even at the existing location?
Yeah.
Quite honestly, oh, yeah. I do tons of parking lots, and we'll have a parking lot that's been there for fifty years. We dig into it, and water migrates, it moves, the earth is fluid, so if anything happened out of the ground, so no matter where we go, there's a chance of it. My biggest concern would not be unsuitable soils in standpoint of, I mean, there's always potential for soft soils, but in the organs, you know, somebody piled a bunch of toxic soil there in the past, that's why they do the geotechnical drawings out, you know, essentially sort of the way and say, no, we're okay, you know, they're staying just as have soil, then it's hard to act clay, awesome, you know, or you find out you have, then clean them up, and you have to, so that's, that's the benefits of getting that.
And that'll happen in December?
We would have to get approval to proceed with that, and then that could happen, you know, in the next month or so.
Pretty quickly?
Yeah.
Well, one of, one of the things I had asked this Dr. Hunt was whether or not we had a backup plan, you know, if we do, because there's likely to be organic materials since it's a wooded area, it's possible, if we end up, and we're already so significantly over budget for what we had allocated for tennis courts, if we add another hundred thousand dollars to the project, do we have, you know, then do we start to look a little bit more seriously at placing the back where they were, you know, near the rec, if there's potentially a hundred fifty thousand dollar savings?
I think we'd have to consider it.
Yeah.
I, I mean, my recommendation would sway on the fact that if we run into those bad soils and it becomes something that is money made, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bring them doing it. I'd look at that other spot and say, what are we losing, are there other ways to accommodate those students? Have we found that the actual students are amounts of those parking lots is in the size we've thought might be? So you'd look at and rate examples, if it's fluid, it's a bit of a light, you know.
Is there any additional work you would be doing on prior location that's more in parallel pathing? So they ended up being, so we don't end up having to go back to the time?
No, no, there's not much to, the bulk of this quite honestly is the grading, so once we did the survey, we did the geotechnical drawings, that's brilliant, when we start doing the bulk of the work. So we need the forms to say, yeah, the ground looks good, and we need the survey to say, yeah, the site is the way it's depicted on the big aerial surveys that we had, and we're all good to go, and then you can start on that with relatively little concern. I mean, there's always a chance of that, but you can feel a lot better about your situation. Like I said, in that current existing location, we have a lot of those same potentials, it's just, you know, less, you know. And that's, that's part of the other reason I feel a little bit more comfortable, is this parking lot's been here for twenty years, whatever, and it's not failing in a catastrophic, you know, it's got what you'd expect from a large lot.
So isn't it just two courts that are over the existing asphalt, that we have three courts?
Yeah, but when they do the grading, they're not just doing the parking lot. So my, my expectation is when they, they compress the ground, I would expect that you have more, you know.
Well, we're sorry for grilling you. We, we did talk about this in facility master planning, and I think several of the board members weren't able to be there, so it's, it's worthwhile for us to really understand. And as you know, we're working with really tight budgets when it comes to facilities. Every time we have an overage, we have to look at where that money comes from, and it comes from our staffing and programming, and so we want to keep things as tight as possible and know where the risks are.
Yeah, you didn't ask any questions. We're, we're sorry. So, no, I just want you to know, this is fluid, we still have that information that we need, and, I mean, hopefully, knowing, you know, our relationship with that is, as the team, if we get some sort of someone to, the challenge changed direction. Like I said, this would be our recommendation for the position on that, and so, you know, situation where it would...
That'd be awesome. And I just wanted, so you're, you feel confident that the boring is in the soil testing, that if the reports say that it's suitable location to build tennis courts, there aren't other things that will come, could come up that are expensive and timely in the building process? What I don't want to do is end up in a situation where we're having a conversation and we say, well, now we're this far away from the school opening and our time, we have time constraints, we've already taken down all of the trees, we've already put money into it, and so even though it's going to cost us eight hundred thousand dollars in total, we were already so far down the path that doesn't make sense to circle back. I really just can't express enough how many concerns I have about this location.
I get what you're saying. I mean, it is something that, the geotechnical drawings aren't perfect. I mean, you're taking points across the site, we did those in the existing parking lot, we found this on the, the site, it's only as good as we're able. If you take six samples and you get an idea for each of the corners and the center of the courts that you have, you should have a pretty good idea of what's there. So as far as something that you get, if you get a strong, you get from soft soils, I mean, that's what you're going to run into, and this isn't a gigantic area, so you have some work that needs to be done, but again, we should know that conceivably from that point.
Thank you. Mrs. Schults, alerting me that there are some audience members who might want to make a comment, so is it normally how we do our meetings, but I would like to, since there are many of you here for the tennis program, if you have a, if you'd like to ask a question or if you have a comment to raise, or you have a please don't call up. Will you stand, I'm sorry, I'm standing here.
Hi, Leslie Lozana, the boys tennis court, and I guess, thank you for doing this and getting it done earlier rather than like, you're blah, 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 blah. My question to you is, you're having three tennis courts and then two tennis courts. I know there's a budget crunch, which mind boggles me because we're one of the most affluent communities around, our kids are excelling in everything. Why can't we add one more tennis court under the third, even if we had two singles courts and four doubles courts? Because when we have tryouts, sometimes I have thirty boys come out, and when I'm doing practices or even tryouts, you have boys sitting, you have boys giving up, and I think girls also, this is a girl's tennis court, and I like to keep one team, I don't like to say, okay, varsity boys here, or JV boys here, it's one team. I think it's important for camaraderie, I think it's important for our community, and one more court would make a huge difference, even if you just did, like I said, two singles courts, and it wouldn't be as much. Is there, is there any possibility to look at that?
It's just money. I mean, that one, that's not, it's true, it's, it's how much money it ends up being.
Does tennis have a boosters organization? That would be, give you, would be a lot of knowledge, I think, out of the history of sports.
And maybe courses, you need, and I don't think having new students in it, I don't know if you want to speak to that too.
And last year, we also just finished curriculum review for math, so where we address our gaps in the curriculum, so wanting to be sure that as we move forward, anytime we're going to have a course there, addressing gaps, and that we also have an understanding of with those, how we are going to be able to successfully, and what will happen with these first students. So one of the hard things, kind of hard to keep math because it builds on pre-processed knowledge, I know a lot of parents and kids feel like you have to be in a certain class at a certain time to be able to access those highest levels. So we want to be able to, once kids, even if they get there a little bit later, down the road, they still have an opportunity to access that, like, for the curriculum, so if we can find ways to speed up that process and get them there, we want to be able to do that so that they can have that experience. able to do that so that they can have that experience.
Those are the reasons to finish, just trying to get through as fast as possible without fully understanding and appreciating. The other thing that we are also attuned, that we have a meeting with Penn State next week about distance learning options, see if maybe that through CCP, algebra plus, that we might be able to offer some additional courses for our students. So, that's, of course, an option for students to do algebra plus any, in the school year, but to see if we might be able to do something really meaningful to lead our campus to do the course. So, we'll learn more about that next week. Just kind of keeping a pulse on our accelerated students, where they've been subject accelerated, so they're above beyond, who are taking AP, all the seniors. We have three students that are in AP right now that are not seniors yet, but all of those students could take AP gaps next year, so we have a place for them. Of course, they also do CCP, whether they're teacher on line or if they're on a college campus. The following school year, we have six students, it was a year of, and just quite a few accelerations with that when they're in a junior school, so they are on track to do exactly the same things that they did taking AP, their junior year and then take six, their senior year, but of course, if we have other options, we definitely do as well. One of the other things that continues to be on the radar is consideration of AP physics and whether we would want to broaden the types of AP physics that we're offering. Of course, our teacher is new this year, so we will work through with him to see, you know, as we move through his second year, is that something that's realistic? I think he was just saying to me, I'm going to meet him this year and figuring out the curriculum, when three AP training is set up to be in front of the AP lab, and even other AP teachers in other districts, and these are almost relationships. Possible this time next school year, we might be revisiting this, as well. The College Board still has not released the additional AP offerings, I think they were doing so much redesign of all their AP courses this year that they can create new courses. We have heard from our sources, tell us from College Board, that it's likely that we'll see an AP physiology as an AP course down the road. I don't know if that will be next year, but considering that we have AP physiology and it is a very high level course, that might be something that we're interested in or place in the existing courses, to be, by College Board. In addition, we are still considering the social studies, a lot of the course, possibly to replace economics, not AP economics, but economics for next year, considering it next year. There's a possibility that we could create a course that could maybe run on homicide or the primary science, or the law, of course, or something like that, where we, that's more of an interdisciplinary project-based approach. You know, it's, it's tough to know at this time, but we do know that we're hiring to do social studies, yeah, number, so next year should be a perfect time to kind of look at skill sets, look at student interest, and see what, of course, I mean, might want to propose to be offered to the social studies department. In addition to that, we have our self-学习 learning committee meeting this year, I'm not sure where we'll end up at the end of the year, so our proposals to work for highlighting the course moving into next year, or beyond, or different models of courses, but that is definitely something to put on the radar and to expect. We should by June of next year have some things to talk about with you as far as findings from the committee, you know, Mr. Rory is heading it up, we're going to be very chock a crack, so I'm sure as far as that goes. Just one comment, I would appreciate the co-act of meeting and how this would influence the scheduling for the students and for the staff. And I think it's great some of these proposals, actually, were ideas generated by teachers, so clearly it's something they're interested in taking on, which is fantastic. I'm just sensitive to making sure when we're adding classes to any department, that truly buy in from the department staff, they feel like they have the bandwidth to take it on, and that it's not creating any undue burden, and so, I just want to put that up there. Actually, that voice and the voice, let's not do that, he's listening to all of our students, I believe, and I think that's part of the interest of this environmental science, was something that it's already very similar to a course that's what we feel like we're doing a great job in, so it wasn't that much of a stretch, she was very interested in kind of, you know, other students, I think with needs course, too, people are concerned about that, to put that off the ground, because we see the need, seeing that our courses are great, but sometimes kids get into those lessons and feel like they're waiting certain, like, things are totally so much, that they can't deal with this more. So, I do feel like.
We want to make sure too that, you know, we're, we're balancing so that we can build a functional classroom, you know, if we have nothing but singles, then there's, there's no way to build, build a schedule in which kids can fully access these. So, so right now, we have such a wide variety of offerings, but we're able to balance that with, with, with preps and maintaining reasonable class sizes, and I'm just, I continue to be a plus with ourselves. They have, they could, they would probably offer ten more classes if they had the capacity to do so, so we're definitely not sure, that's, that's very exciting.
The thing that I'm thinking about too is the students and their stress levels, and sometimes, you know, there's a new AP, there's an expectation that you could take that instead of taking the regular, and then the flip side of that is from the college's perspective, oftentimes, from my understanding, kind of, too, in college, I don't know everything about the college admissions process for sure, but if a class is offered and you don't take it, that might be noticed more than it would be if the class wasn't offered in your school district. So, I, I know you're thinking about those things as well, I feel like we're starting to max out on AP offerings, you know, we have to have some non-AP offerings, so there's got to be some ceiling on those, and we may want to take a look at from where our kids are going to college. Are those courses, are they getting credit for those courses, are those, are they competing with other students in other districts who are, be able to take those courses, and kind of what the application is there? And then there's also an expense to the family to take the AP class and to take the AP test, so we're starting to, you know, those, those bills are definitely getting bigger for the parents of the district as well. So, there's a lot of factors to consider, I don't envy you, your positions to create challenge, variety, and be able to have the schedule and balance all that. So, there's a couple of factors that we did talk about today that we'll just break forward.
There's also, I mean, I know, we've seen that, who will take the AP course and are fine with going to a school that doesn't accept it. It gives them, they, they had, they hope that they might take a very similar course again, and then it gives them an easy start. Sure, I did college, I mean, I know that, it was. I'm looking at the agency research relative to exposure to AP curriculum, it's a student that's far more likely to be successful at a collegiate level, just for example. So, regardless of that score on the AP test now, like I said, we want to be responsible with course recommendations, or maybe, you know, just talk about, there are, there are trade-offs, and, you know, we're happy kids are above everything else. But, you know, so we want to be able to continue to access, do so responsibly, and do so in a way where kids understand how it's okay to, 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 to be successful.
I would think things like AP biology, AP chem, AP physics, AP and biological science, they're not prerequisites for each other, sometimes they are, so we wouldn't have to offer all of those every year. I mean, as long as kids know, like, okay, this is going to be an odd number of years, these ones are the even number of years, and then.
He does it best.
And then.
And we will build based on student request, so we build a master schedule, we do so by hand, you just get a better result when you do it by hand. You know, speech has been in our course selection guide, and we have two kids sign for it each year, so we're able to, and so, if, if we are able for those courses to go, but evaluating, you know, there's certain.
The only other thing that comes to mind is because of the number of single tents, there can be pressure put on students to continue, because teachers want their class to run, and so I'm sensitive to that, I don't know if you're doing anything with the guidance department, but I think sometimes the students feel a lot of pressure to continue, so for example, with French, I think we didn't have as many kids in French, I know my daughter was given a lot of pressure to continue with French, even though that wasn't something that she wanted to do. So, just to, as a parent, something that I hope we're addressing through the guidance department, that the students are truly choosing the classes that they want, they feel that any pressure coming from staff members.
So, this spring will hold conversation of English ELA, a lot of what has been done there, so that we'll go through the next conversation about curriculum and social studies as well, that'll be there this year. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Can I have a motion for superintendent's, nine A through K? And a second? Second moved by Mr. Kansas, and second moved by Mrs. O'Toole. Any discussion on these?
I would just point out, I, you did, I did retrieve, no, I.
Yeah.
Plus, in the past, they approved one, and they approved it later, but every year the last four years, ten, three, so this actually is a change, shows three, so I'll point out two.
Did you see my note too about, did you see changes? Photo moved?
I did, yes, and I'll pass that along to you later, yes.
Sorry, I was going to tell you right now.
Sorry.
They traditionally run three, so we're.
Correct.
Adding those later?
No, we do see here, that, that changes the thing. When Mary Kay did the note, and I called Dr. Hill, and I said, how is this working in the past? She, she basically told me that it's been up to three the last three years.
So, you changed it to three?
This contract is updated.
Okay, Mrs. Bruna, I think I signed one, I said one, I'll have to double check the signatures. Any other discussion? Mrs. Bruna, do you want to take the call?
Mrs. Garber.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. O'Toole.
Yes. Can I have a motion for superintendent's recommendations, ten A, number B? And a second?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Bruna, seconded by Mrs. O'Toole. Dr. Hunt, would you like to speak to these?
Sure, item A is the second reading of calendar for the 2021 school year, just a reminder, we're working on 2021, 22 currently. Item B is an MOU, the Education Association, or the Lead Employee. Item C is the proposal for tennis court design work. Item D is an updated facility improvement plan based on our conversations that we had at last meeting, with minor modifications, although the board received an email from Mr. Lifter, highlighting those changes, and item E is abolished here.
And we've talked that, this is the first year that we've had a facility improvement plan, so perhaps as we go forward, we'll do a presentation and then adopt it at the following meeting that allows us to incorporate the changes. But what I like about this is that it does put, you know, pending to what our plan is for this next fiscal year, and in approving it, the budget, the budget is really approved, so of course you don't have to worry about, can I spend thirty thousand dollars on paving, or does that need specific approval, because we're approving all the projects that are in the visiting of 20 budget. Any other discussion? Mrs. Bruna, do you just want to show the, the next slide, the additional parameters that we're putting around, I just see. I think we'll have to do an add-on to this agreement. Right, yeah. So, but I want to vote supporting it and ending it. Any other discussion? Mrs. Bruna, would you get a chance to be called on?
Mrs. Garber.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, can I have a motion for treasurer's recommendations, eleven A, about? And a second? Moved by Mrs. O'Toole, seconded by Mr. Kansas, and Mrs. Bruna, would you like to walk us through?
So, I have a page in the number of financial reports, these look like, they have looked at the past several months, the difference you'll notice is now that we do have a private forecast approved, there are numbers in for the months, for the months estimated for the rest of the year. So, for example, on the SM2 report right there that he's got pulled up for us, there's a line right down the middle, that's just kind of to draw your eye and show you what is, to the left of that line is actual, and to the right of that line is estimated amounts. So, what I will do, as we go forward, is put another column in here that shows the variance. Right now, we have no variance because I knew exactly the amount, so, again, I don't know. First and last, I was very, yeah. So, yeah, preparing this at the end of the month was, was really key for me to, yes, put it there.
So, the variance will be cumulative variance?
Right, so, I have done in the past, and I'll, I'll kind of play around with this and see what, what works and what everybody kind of likes. I have done this before where we have just kept this report exactly as it is in here, and then done another page where, you know, say, for example, in January, our taxes don't come in or something, then in February, I don't estimate just the eight, now I estimate ten, you know? So, we do kind of, I move those for my own analysis when, when we're working through these things, but if I just keep changing things in here all the time, there's not really an idea of what did we originally think versus what we think now. So, I, I will come up with some, some sort of way to demonstrate, here's what we thought, here's what we think now, and here's what that variance is. Right now, my instrument is prepared.
Another, another thing to consider is the current month's variance and the cumulative of all the months, we can talk about this month in particular, I know you've.
I've done a report in the past where, following this report, I would have it broken down into the same banner by forecast line, and then I would have a monthly variance, so it was the variance from the one that we estimated, and then I have three columns here showing this month's information, and then three columns here showing the cumulative information, so I can do that as well, rather than just the full year. I'll kind of put some things together and present next month and kind of see what, you know, what people like, and, and, you know, like I've said, ongoing, this is, I view this as kind of an ongoing thing, if something's up on the, hey, we want a reporter there about X, Y, Z, we can throw something in here. And then the graphs on the general fund revenue and general fund expenditures, those two reports, the graphs are different than what they have been in the past months, this is now showing a percentage of our total estimate for the year. So, I, I probably will come up with something as well to compare to previous years, because I do think that's important, if, you know, if our revenue is really trending down from, from previous years or something, that's something we'd want to know. Certainly, I would know it, but it's something I would want to present to, to you as well as you can see initially. The financial summary report, moving on past those two detailed reports, nothing really exciting here, the negative balances are, are still, you know, the ones that we expect or something, really that I, I need to point out there. You do see on the bond retirement fund, the month-to-date expenditure, if you could scroll down for me a few pages.
Page five.
Thank you. The bond retirement fund, I kind of bolded that right there, because we don't typically see expenditures out of that fund, we did make our debt payments, which were not due until December first, but because I don't like to live on the edge, I did make those payments in November, so. And then, moving on to the next report, it's just the thing, reconciliation, the typical, typical reconciling item there that we've had every month going forward for the past several months, and we will continue that going forward, that's just the STR. That's just the S T R S A C H. We book that at the end of the month and then we make that A C H. It doesn't actually hit our bank until every month end. And then deposits and investments, no significant changes there in any of that. So moving on to other impressions on item A. Moving on, item B is equipment disposal. There's a list there attached for you. Item C, this looks like a very long list of non-annual certificates. Again, I know. We really are putting some procedures in place here to get these. The issue with, the reason you're seeing these now is because in the past, there was just a really large blanket multi-vendor purchase order out there that we just kind of threw these types of things on. We're trying to get to a place where we're doing individual P O's for these things. And, you know, all of these that say E S C, the Northeast Ohio, we got cut off there. Those are the E S C of Northeast Ohio. Those are all personnel items. They all came in one envelope altogether, but they are individual P O's and individual invoices. So we separated them out here. The very first one there, I kind of skipped over with the E S C. The very first one there, that P S I, that is an item for St. John's Park where we handle their salary money that was theirs. And then the last one, I was a little confused when I first read this because Jill didn't put this together for me. And I was like, we're purchasing students in all the areas. This was a sixth grade field trip item, so that's what that was. Item D is donations. We have $1,250 for football program from the C F H S Football Team Parents Support Group. We have $500 for the wrestling program from the Dentistry at Winbury. $100 for the wrestling program from David Chapman and Charlotte Lifter. And $100 for the athletic department from the F O E number 2436, ladies and gentlemen. And that's the Bob Scott Award. Item E is the.
I have a question about the donations. The, I remember we had a football team parents program. Is that separate from the boosters and is it a nonprofit or is it just?
So, I believe what this is, in our athletic funds, we have an athletic fund that is applied to all the athletic funds. And then each sport has what we call in the office, a fundraiser account. So when I want to make a purchase of something and all the parents are actually buying it, but we're purchasing it through our process, they collect their money and then they donate it to us and then we make that purchase for the program.
So when you say fundraiser, it's not like they're a different fundraiser, they're just?
Someone, if they are doing a fundraiser, it's going into that account. And it's specific to, it maintains it separately in a separate cash account so that it stays for that sport. So that when someone donates something and they wanted to specifically go, for example, to the wrestling program, it doesn't go into the big pot of athletic funds and accidentally gets spent to college.
Collecting football stuff with car.
Right.
There's no issues with them not making profits. Fundraisers are.
Well, it's just like our students who are fundraisers who we're allowed to contribute.
So the history on this is many of these sports used to have support groups or accounts outside of the district. And we had to do the processing and bring them in. So a fundraiser down, you know, car wash with a close up. To raise money to offset the summer trip. That goes into that accountability to that sport and personal cost.
Or, you know, just the example of time for the fundraiser necessarily. We want to buy matching sweatshirts for all of the basketball girls. We want them to keep those sweatshirts so their parents are going to pay for them. They collect the money, donate to us.
Yeah, it used to be like, give your $50 to a parent.
Right, and they would buy us, okay. Are, it's worth rechecking that all of the sports are being run from that one?
Yeah, I think Charlie's.
Well, I just know like for yard designs, for sprinting, I wrote a check to a district parent in the parent's name. You won't forget that one.
If it wasn't a fundraiser, like there's nothing that we can do about if a parent group wants to, hey, I'm collecting more, I want to host spaghetti dinner, or I want to do, you know, there's not a whole lot we can do about that that is just a group of parents who want to spend money on their kids.
Right.
If they wanted to be official, they wanted to run through us, we're not going to turn them on.
I was just confused then. I thought that you want the new process to be of all of, they all go.
No, no, this isn't something I set up this is the way it has been.
Yeah, I was talking about is they would go to a bank with a name, football, football account. Out there for years and years.
Then it's not a matter of.
Right. This, you know, if they do a fundraiser and they raise a thousand dollars and it's to purchase uniforms and they go spend a hundred, they want to make sure that $200 stays in that sport. But I think maybe what you're mixing up is what I have asked the support organizations to change. And that is, I've asked them to give donations to us in the form of money rather than buying items for teachers or classrooms or sports or whatever. And then that way it just keeps it cleaner, there's less gray area when it comes to, you know, if there's a piece of equipment and something breaks, if someone gets hurt, you know, liability issues or ownership issues, you know, things don't walk away from the campus, you know, things like that. It just makes it, it just makes it cleaner. And, you know, too, when they do give us a donation, we've made it such that, you know, I have no issue with making the purchase first and then having them just give us the exact dollar amount. So they're not giving us a thousand, only let's spend 900 and then going to work with it. So they're going to give us the exact dollar amount. Okay, moving on to item E, inter-fund transfers. These are the items that were presented in the fiber forecast presentation. You will see a couple differences. The first one, the bond retirement fund, that's the hospital 264 item that is, that was estimated at $158,000. We don't know exactly what's going to be until those numbers come back. So that is the amount needed there. And there was another change.
The permanent permit, you were.
Oh, yes.
To do a second transfer.
Thank you very much. The second one, the P I fund. In the fiber forecast, we had a very exact dollar amount because the formulas calculated based on property values and collection rates and all that kind of stuff. We estimated a collection on the inside mileage. I'm not going to be exactly right on that collection. So right now I am recommending a transfer of 1.5 million. And then at the end of the year, after the taxes, those taxes have come in, we'll know exactly what we need to get to that $2 million recommended number. And we'll transfer a little bit more.
Since the bond, we have approximately $150,000. Things were underspent last year and Chris's budget was $1,600 before we added the tennis courts. It might be worth revising when you're ready to make that transfer, that idea, the capital projects one. If we want to make the transfer into that, which is reversible back into the general fund if we need it, since it's not specifically earmarked for projects.
Certainly, that's, you know, we would have to create the fund first by asking permission, get that done first and then make the transfer. And then the last item, item F. This is authorizing me to participate in the tax advance program with the county. They do require that we request to participate. I don't know why, not participate, but they do request that we make a form where that we have to request that that has to be turned into them before the end of the calendar year. So that is on page.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Bruna, shake your hand.
Mrs. Garber.
Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Kinsler.
Yes.
Mrs. Artull.
Yes. Does anyone have any other business that they'd like to introduce to you? I just had one, the board governance manual. I emailed out to all of you a draft that had been revised in the course of the last year. And since we readopted that in January of a year, if you could just submit any revisions that you have to that, we'll get a finalized copy for the organizational meeting. Anybody else? Our next meeting will be our tax budget organizational meeting on Wednesday, January 8th, 2020, at 6 o'clock in the Sam's Community Room. Can I have a motion for executive session?
I move that in accordance with the higher revised code 121.22, should be a pause board of education, go into executive session for the sole purpose of.
How does this settle last during?
Preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations required in sessions for public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Item 2nd. Mrs. Bruna. Mrs. Garber. Yes.
Mrs. Rose.
Yes.
Mrs. Kinsler.
Yes.
Mrs. Artull.
Yes. And we don't expect any action to be given after this decision, so. Thanks for coming.
You know, like, let me know and maybe we could start some type of fundraiser. I just think, oh, we have a lot of people here supporting tennis. Maybe some of these people would pitch in, but they've already pitched in by voting for the levy.
Yes.
Right? And so tennis keeps being pushed aside to get all this for football. I know it doesn't bring in money, but it brings in success in children.
So I, let me just address, because the comments have been made about voting for the levy and supporting that and that the commitment was to reinstall the tax courts, which again, board has always intended to mean that commitment. So I'm not sure how to dispel that myth any further. And it was only postponed for a year and that timeline hasn't shifted either. So with regards to that, I just want to make sure that that's clear. I will say, you know, it's like if I told my children I was going to build them a pool and then a tree fell on my roof, I made the commitment to build them a pool this summer, but we gotta fix the roof so we can sleep at night. I would have a conversation with them around, I'm trying to figure out how to spend this money in a way that gets us everything we need. So we have a lot more information now than we had two years ago about how much the facility needs on our campus costs and we're juggling all of that. To your point about parity among our athletic teams and spending on the district, we have this conversation I've actually asked us to have at the board meeting in the new year because I think there are some areas where certain teams get more funding, more facility use, which costs us more money. And, you know, I have two swimmers and I spent $500 for them to swim and swim team is canceled because the pool isn't working. So, you know, it's a small district, we're limited funds, there's a push and pull in how we're spending them. We are sitting up here trying to really look at this in terms of what's in the best interest of all the students in the district. And I hear you saying that six courts would be ideal for tennis. I would like to understand beyond the additional $8,000, what gets sacrificed? Because I don't remember from master planning, you know, whether or not six was ever considered or it was always just five because five was what we had in the past. So I think it's a good question. I just wanted to add more information in terms of, you know, what it is we're trying to balance in this.
I understand and to your point of your children swimming paying $500, would that be an option to say to the tennis parents that come out, we would like to put six courts, maybe four doubles courts and two singles courts? Could everyone pitch in $500? Maybe that would make the difference. I mean, I'm just, I'm just questioning you. I'm the coach, I'm trying to make the program better, I'm trying to get another state champion, I'm trying to get a whole team to the states for champions. And, you know, you can't do that if you don't have.
Well, and it's better to ask the question than to turn around and say, I would have loved to have had a sixth court. So I appreciate you bringing it up as a. Thank you. I do know Dr. Hunt had talked to the A D, I think spoke with coaches when we were first considering what was needed. We never heard a sixth court would be desired, so this is the first we're hearing of that. Probably need to give Ryan a little bit of time to see what that would do with the traffic flow, give us a sense of what that would cause.
I don't want to give any false expectations.
No, we'll look at it.
The reality is.
US boys' tennis courts, that would show you how you could do two singles courts. It's right for.
We also are right up against the timeline. And it's really important that we get this done. I think it's the right thing to do. We have the money and bond proceeds, so we're clear on that fact. And I think adding another layer like an additional court in terms of his time and research and slowing this process down, I think would be problematic. Would you have a sixth court sometime down the road after you raise funds? And those are conversations we can engage in, do we need that? I can't weigh in on that, that's not for me. We've always talked about five courts, that's what we had. I know that's what we need to compete in, close matches and bring our kids back to their home, you know, in terms of playing in front of other students and their parents. So happy to engage in the conversation, but I don't want to give false expectations that, one, we can afford a review sharing what it does to give on that. And I think it gives may outweigh an additional, you know, six court, just being frank and honest. And from a timeframe perspective, we would say, hold on, go show me what six courts looks like. Let's see if we can raise the money. There's no way this is going to be in.
Hi, I'm Carol. What's the value queue? How many warrants are you going to do?
Generally, we'd probably do one in each corner and a couple in metal, so. So it's probably eight, something like that.
This is the kind of concept we're calling it. I don't know if they come with a paper, you know, the courts or a budget. You know, the original budget plan, I think it was, you know, the system where they were, which would cover a better budget. So the original plan, so I think that moving it was great. I think, and maybe it would be nice to have where they were. I think the other two courts, the rec, that would be an awesome addition to get that more there. I know it's the cost, I get all that, with recs and everything, I have to definitely thank it. But I do appreciate the school board keeping this first and foremost. And, you know, hopefully it's a deal before the end of the year or before the tennis season. But it does, at least it's coming and I just want to stay as first and foremost.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about what I was like? I just wanted to make sure because people had said, oh, you know, where I sent email or I ran into a member, for sure it's going to be done, it's going to be done, it's going to be done, it's definitely going to be done. And I feel like the message that I'm hearing is that it's going to be done, but not for sure. What? Like, the money's there unless there's something else comes up. And last time I felt like it's going to be done for next year, but now I feel like, oh, but not for the girls now. Now the girls are going to have it next year. So I just feel like, I just want to hear, yes, it's on, it's going to be, I don't know, voted on by the procedures and we're set to go and as quick as it can be done, as quickly as it can and yes, we're going to go forward. It doesn't feel like you're going to go forward unless the money's not there or unless it's not accrued or unless. And so that's just.
I'll reply, but I'll let you reply, Brian. So we're voting on two things this evening that might give you peace of mind. One is for adopting the updated facility improvement plan, which now has in the year 2020 budget, the $543,000 allocated for tennis courts. The second thing we're voting on is a contract with T D A to formally engage them in the design process. So it's the first step of getting down the road of construction. And I'll let Brian speak too. I think what we're trying to call forward is that there are risks in construction that are beyond our control. And some of those risks could cause a delay. If you can elaborate, but our intent is to try to get them done as quickly as possible. That there are things that sometimes we can't control.
There are, and that's why we're doing those upfront things, the survey and the geotechnical warrants. That's the full intention of those is to understand your risks before you get into it. Because again, if we were to do something where we decided location four was it, no matter what, and then you start excavating and you're heading down your warrants and you find out there was a problem, then you're scrambling. But by doing that process upfront now, when you can't be building, can't be doing anything anyway, that's the time to do it so that we're prepared so when the ground is broken, we're truly building and we're ready to go. I don't want to come out here to problems either. So we want to make sure that we do the process right. And everybody's comfortable, once we stick our shovel in the ground, that we've done everything we could to make sure the process is going to go smoothly and maintain the budget to the fullest extent of our potential, so.
And the questions you're hearing tonight are because. And the questions you're hearing tonight are, because the recommendation that's coming to the board tonight to move forward the proposal to TDA, is for this location, location four. And I'm not sure I'm there yet with regards to thinking that that is the right place for us to be moving forward the district, so that's what the questions I've been asking about. That doesn't impact the decision to build the tennis courts or the timeline that we agreed upon to build them in, my questioning, it's just I have continued concerns over location four.
Second, Carol?
Yeah, my name's Davis Makowski, I have a question for you, Ryan. Does that $530,000, does that include contingency?
I don't believe that was in that budget.
Was it? That's pretty high. I know a few places that have had courts fund recently, in particular Case Western's had a six court fund right now, and it's around $220,000. They're tearing down completely down the ground and then reboarding and reserving, so.
That's an incredibly good price. We just did, speaking out of turn, but we just did courts over at Gilmore, and they were in that 450 range, upwards of 460, so, we're not, like I said before, we're not going to cut it tight, I'm not going to give you the lowest number on that, hasn't it, just because we don't know what we're going to enter. We have to set a budget that isn't to the numbers, but 220 is an extremely low number.
I forget his contractor's name, that's what I'm saying, maybe we should look at other quotes, because that seems really high.
This, I mean, to understand, this has to be publicly bid, so, while we're working off an estimate, we don't have a contractor right now, so we would love that contact, we would love their help and encouragement to bid, and we'll also rate everyone up here if they're in on time and on their budget, so we can meet other.
We never meet, we're a good check for this.
We're not, the approval tonight isn't saying we're approving construction at $500,000. The approval tonight is designing it so we get it ready to go out to bid, and when that happens, we'll actually have kind of a long course to work on.
The other thing too, just to answer to that, it could be a matter of storm drainage, whether or not they did any, that was all existing, things of that nature add to the cost.
I understand, we start moving earth around in six months, but it just seems like we've got contingency in there. My only suggestion other than that is I would move it north, I know there's this drainage concern and stuff like that, but tennis courts add a lot of aesthetics to the facility, they're nice looking, so I would consider that, it's not, it's almost, I hear you guys talking about this, it seems like it's a burden, but it's not actually a burden, it makes your facility much better, and it's going to bring people from the community in to use these courts. So, people are going to come to Schrader Falls on weekends and things like that, and you'll have kids that set up matches, they have lessons like you're talking about, so, I don't, I would just consider this a plus.
Thank you. I think what you're hearing from us, we're, I think we're also reacting a little bit to what we thought was the original budget for the courts, and now there's been a cost escalation that we're just trying to make sure we have the money for. We have earmarked the $543,000, so then hopefully it'll be a lot less than that, that would be great, but that money will be preserved in case they do it, and maybe we kind of want to conserve a decilement at this point, so we don't end up being short and not being able to complete the courts later. Ryan, what would be involved in the design work to parallel getting the boards for site four and designing the old locations so that we can put them both out to bid?
I mean, essentially two engineer designs, I wouldn't double my costs, I wouldn't double my engineers' costs.
Did you get paid?
No. I don't see it.
So, can you ballpark that, like, because that, we might end up where the bids are significantly different too, and that makes.
It might be, it might be $15,000 to $20,000 more than I do earlier this year. That's a possibility, that's a little irregular, but it's something to be done.
I would like to do that, it's consolidate our two for tennis, but the idea of having two separate sites bid it, because the first site, we don't really have a current idea, he gave us a quick and dirty 140, something in that range differential, but we were told originally that site was around $250,000, so, you know, it ended up being significantly different in the bidding, I think that might change our thinking about the location of the boards.
Is money better spent on one board?
At some point, it reaches a certain mass, I mean, if you start getting too close together, it's not really going to be that, that much, and the loss of the board is such that you get those around the perimeter and inside, you pretty much remember what would be more than to help, right, obviously. I don't think you're going to get that much. If we're considering both locations though, I would give more in security than the existing lots, because, like I said, I've had just a couple problems about 20-year-old park funds that came freshly browned, so, sometimes it's risky, but the chances are, based on what you've seen, it's not, you know, so, I would expect both locations to be.
Is there anybody else? I thought I said that, okay.
Hi, Addie Olverton, the Rock Board, and I just wanted to say, if you do happen to go with the location for the five courts that you're planning on, that's great. I did hear you say tonight that if you do go with that location, that you would be willing to repair the current courts for the rec. Being that we have no, we're not able to commit anything financially to those courts, I just wanted to show my appreciation for the fact it affects them, like, repair them for the summer, because that space is huge to rec. And if they do become multi-use courts in the future, that would be awesome for them.
Addie, could you guys run tennis last summer?
Yes, yes, we did.
On the existing ones?
We did.
And could, do you think they could go with your summer, in your opinion, without?
No.
No, that something needs to happen right away?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's gigantic rec in Low, I don't support, she heard this one, right? They weren't real bad.
So, it leaves the crowd.
Exactly, I'm just saying that will be even worse.
Okay. And two courts is sufficient for your tennis program?
It's not ideal, but we would make it work.
Did you have to reduce the program this year?
We did.
Because you just said you did.
Yeah, we scaled it back a half.
Is that less revenue to rec?
No.
Because the membership.
We are reworking all of our options when we redo camp, or when we, if we, tennis, the tennis program, we're going to restructure that to offer it more like a camp, because the way we were offering it as part of our classic family membership, it wasn't on money paid for for us.
Okay.
We're practically getting away with the membership, and, you know, the rec needs to capture all the dollars that we can, so that's what we're going to be pretty sure during this camp.
So, I don't want to put words in your mouth, and I know you just don't like this at the rec quarter, but do you feel it would be beneficial to have more than two courts for the recs use?
Yes.
In that location, because you could always use the other courts around that corner, you need it.
For us, I mean, yes, obviously for the rec, that would be awesome to have more courts in that area, closer to the rec, that would be my preference.
In, okay, now, let's say, two years from now, when we have the courts, if we, let's say we have new courts at that location four, is the rec going to run their program for tennis there in the summer, rather than if we had two courts, multi-purpose courts? What would you?
They could, it would be us ideal. This is, it's nice for parents to sit right at the rec and watch.
Right, but if there's five courts there, two courts there, are you going to, you see the rec program, you see five?
Yes.
Or six, or?
Thank you, Addie.
Thank you.
Sorry, one more question, you mentioned the budget escalated, did the budget escalate because of moving the court?
In our opinion, no.
So, what I heard originally was about 250, three buildings on that existing slot.
That was not our estimate, I bet bids were 250 for two courts, so that would not be our estimate.
We don't have enough.
What would you have to be?
That was, that was if we ran the $31.5 million plan, you know, which was what, it was four years ago now, right?
Okay, I know it escalated, but what cost like to build five courts worth half and rebuild a?
Well, that, we don't, that's why we're asking, I'm trying to parallel that.
Yeah, I think that's my point, is the escalation cost, I mean, I know it's more than a lot of things, it's because we have an additional park in the area, and I know that's helped a lot, and so I just want to lose the fact that additional cost.
Right, there are trade-offs with any location.
But, because, but tell me about the traffic flow currently, and how beneficial is the new traffic flow?
Part of it was to make sure that the power was activated, and I have to tell you that Ryan's representation solved issues that we've been dealing with outside school class earlier 15 years ago.
And so, if we put the.
It's safer, it's more efficient.
Does that have to change? You would have to give that back.
We don't have to change. We just reduce parking, we just reduce the parking, we lose 50 spaces or something like that, so we have to limit parking. Addie, we'd be good to get an idea of how many parking spaces.
I don't know that that's accurate.
I was just going off of what Ryan, he gives an estimate of, of 60 spaces, yeah.
But you're not going to be able to put all your students in there, you're not.
You'd have to reduce probably.
We'd have to reduce student parking availability.
Yeah, we'll push them somewhere else.
So, it'd be good to know the actual number of student spaces that have been utilized over the last five years or something, so you can get a sense of, I mean, I know Dr. Hunt, you'd given us an estimate that about 80%, you know, is that, are we really, do we really have 80% of our juniors and seniors parking on campus?
Maybe, I'd give you actual numbers.
Yeah, and we'll know, you know, maybe we, maybe we would still have enough spaces.
And do we know what other schools in the area offer to the juniors and seniors?
I know, I would say contrary to what I said earlier, the majority of juniors and seniors drive, some soft, some a lot softer.
In other school districts?
Yes.
Thanks, Heidi Lake. A couple things, I'd love to, I know you just said the majority of schools that are near us, the juniors and seniors drive, it'd be great to have that actual information from those schools so we know, because it's crazy that familiar kids drive to school, I have seniors. But I'm also curious, did you ever think of having additional, additional parking spaces at where number four is, instead of taking over the other tennis courts?
Right, you could speak to that, it's the location, not the number of spaces.
So, we don't want people to have to walk that far.
Yeah.
So, we tend to, let Ryan play about it.
No, it was more about getting all the student body in one specific area. The challenge that you had previous to the new configuration was, you had students parking in multiple lots around the site, and you had parents and buses, and students traveling all of those specific drive areas, so each time a student was crossing, no matter where they were across the site, the site were crossing a bunch of different traffic paths. By consolidating them, you've really limited it to basically the students and the buses, and you pulled all the parents and teachers out of that stream, essentially, so you've really dramatically reduced the amount of cross-traffic desert accidents.
I imagine, though, had you been given the task of, these three courts, they're going back, it's going to be permanent, this is your challenge, make it work, make the traffic pattern safe, given those courts are going to be there, because that's where we know they existed for, I don't know how many of those courts have been there, and that they haven't sold, in our turn, but two that have left. But had you been given the task of saying, there are five courts there, make it safe, figure out a way to, like, could you not, you could have done that?
No, I'm not going to say we're going to make it safe campus, because I don't think you had an unsafe campus before, but in an ideal situation, you're separating those various traffic paths from the standpoint of, you don't want students crossing in front of buses and parents and things of that nature, if you don't have to have them doing that. The ideal situation is you separate traffic into the distinct parts as much as possible to reduce those collisions and those accidents. So, in order to achieve that, you really took a look at it from, essentially, there's little pools of populations, so it'd be the students up at one end, just, you know, separate them from the rest of the traffic, the buses in a location, and then the staff in another location. You could spread it out again, but you're basically back to where you were, and it basically disrupts the, that concept, so.
It disrupts it, makes it unsafe.
I would say it makes it less safe than it is designed to be, from the standpoint of you increase the amount of potential accidents.
How much did that cost, that whole project?
I have that number.
Because we voted the levy to get the courts reinstalled after the 28th year school suspension, and they weren't reinstalled, and then it was decided to change the traffic pattern. Did we vote on that to say, "Yeah, it's a great idea"? I mean, I thought we'd all want it to be safe.
Yeah, and one of this time, like, in our last meeting, essentially, we started master planning after the levy, and this recommendation on traffic pattern came after that, and it's my recommendation to try to, try to move forward, because, you know, this safe versus unsafe, we had a number of concerns with the way the park had managed, it actually got worse with the re-land.
So, we didn't vote on that?
Definitely not.
We had to say, so the tennis courts didn't get done because you guys went down that project?
Correct.
They were what I'm holding against.
We didn't, doesn't say.
Well, it was discussed a year ago in the board meetings, and I know that conversations happened with the athletic department, and that they had conversations with the tennis coaches and.
Well, I can't, I said.
These are all tasks, not just tennis, like, it's, like, y'all, all the people voted on this levy, and then a decision was made that impacted all of us. It just doesn't make any sense.
Well, to me, it came down to, is it safer, are tennis courts now as worth it for safety, is it was safer versus waiting in other tennis courts? So, that's what I weighed it as.
Right.
That's a decision we can make.
So, another question, and I will email, I have a question, because I, I think about how, this is a question, like, how you said, like, the tighter vision, like, these pools or whatever, and all that, that's an accident, you know, so you didn't put your bull in, this whole, we voted, if you're raising tennis staff, and it wasn't like an accident happen, they decided to do this traffic pattern, you guys decided.
Right, I was simply saying, there's an additional cost in our facilities, between 13 and 18 million dollars, which wasn't an accident, but no one knew about, or hadn't been quantified, that is now quantified through the master planning process, which is how the tennis courts got. But again, the tennis courts are going to be built.
Right, and then, like, in the paper, it said, "Right, we're set next summer," but then I hear him saying, "It might not, it might not be done until October."
Well, if we start.
I didn't.
Yeah, you did, you said, you said, yeah, you did.
You said five months from April.
I said five months from April.
He was just saying, if we start building and then turns out. I think he said, might be end of August or September, I mean, but, we can't, it's weather the canvas, we can't, I mean, we can't know when winter's going to end and when they can start.
Well, I'll say that, totally, okay, fine, maybe it was the time we did that, or whatever. You can, you're going to go back to whoever and find out whether or not the boards or these soil samples or whatever, to figure out if it's even stable enough to do it. So, though it's not, and hope you're going to get these two bids out at the same time for, also figure out if you put them in the same space that they were, right? You're going to try to do that at the same time?
Well, that's what we're talking about.
You're just introducing that concept.
That's what we're talking about. And then if you do, you're going to have to change the traffic path, right?
Not necessarily. So, what I think we need to do, Heidi, thank you for your comments, we really appreciate it.
I appreciate you for keeping.
So, I think that we have introduced a new concept to Ryan this evening, which is, we'd like to parallel have two locations, and that gives us a contingency plan, if one of the locations either isn't feasible due to soil barriers or whatever, and also if it's a lot more expensive, then we should be having a discussion about the trade-offs. And we asked for some additional information about how that would impact the traffic flow and parking, so we just need to give Ryan some time to pull some of that information together, let us know the impact on our agreement with TDA, it'd be, you know, add these additional duties that we're asking them to do tonight.
Could I recommend that we continue to move forward with the proposed asset, as it's written, and you supplement that?
Yes, just, I think that that's fair, so we'll.
I want to say too, this is a design process, we're constantly vetting out the best solution, we're not going to just pick a solution and go with it, that's what these conversations meant, so, that's the intent, we're not going to go down a path, you know, what's Uh, we're not going to go down a path, you know, it's the wrong path.
Why is that a question? Why can't we do that behind, that was a very...
Sorry.
Can you stand and say me?
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Heidi. Um, why can't we do the tennis courts behind that softball field toward the back? Especially like that would be like an ideal spot.
You do have attention basing that runs along here, so in order to put these, it essentially takes up the bulk of the practice fields that are there presently, so essentially what you have back there for all your, your supplemental, uh, ball fields and your practice fields would be mostly taken up by the tennis courts.
And we have a lot of unsuitable soils when we put that parking strip in.
What I'd like to share, and I am, I'm worried about, I think it looks great, but I'm, I'm just gonna not, I would love for the courts to be done, um, by the fall, I don't think it can, you know, because you know how like when you build a house or anything, and they always say it's gonna be done a certain time, and, you know, things happen. So I just don't think anyone should count on that, but I know you would do that.
Absolutely, and my point I made before is, as long as we keep the process going and nothing unforeseen happens, you know, that's catastrophic, we should be fine. Um, I've done a number of these and it hasn't gone poorly, so, um, in all likelihood, it will go fine. Like, there's always the potential for something, that's what I meant to say, and if it was taken the way I called it.
No, like, I just wrote down the practice that you shared.
It's, it's, but my point with that before was, if, if you did run into something substantial, they could push it back. And my point too is that there are, there are some stuff like that that you have to wait for, and so every month that we would delay the process for whatever reason, working through the idea of, you know, additional tennis courts or moving the location to the south end of the site, if we're working through all these various ideas, um, that's just, it's just time, and the window to do the actual work is that four to five month window essentially.
Well, we got this building done in time in the winter break, so, um, although for the same result, I think we've, we've got a great team in place, um, we've got a commitment from the Board of Education, the administration, to do everything we can to have the tennis courts installed in time for the fall season. Um, so I think with that, we should move forward with the agenda.
Can I, can I...
Thank you everybody for your comments.
Can I ask one question just from Larry, please, as you talked about parallel pass and designing the tennis in two locations, you also talked about a parallel or possible conversation with the rec on what the sports were included or would look like if there was two remaining, both of those things are interesting.
To me, they are, I see, this is option one. Option one includes the middle school lot and refurbishing or whatever needs to be done to the rec courts. Option two is putting the courts back in their original location.
Option one includes refurbishing, figuring out what to do with the tennis courts.
Very fun.
Okay.
Thank you, and option two includes changes, um, more specifics on changes to the... It's the completeness of the design, I mean, it's, it's if we put them back where they were, what has to happen in the middle school lot, because I know we have paving that needs to happen there, if we don't put that first there, how does it impact the, this, this option one, you know, we don't wanna leave the rec courts hanging out there, there is a cost to them, I think we should probably figure out what needs to happen with them, at least at a minimum, get a plan done if we can, so that if there are some economies that we can realize by taking that project at the same time, that we're able to pull trigger on that.
Kevin, we haven't heard from any students in Jackson this week.
Oh, I'm sorry, hi Jax, that's...
I just wanted to bring up that the courts at the rec are like completely unplayable, um, they were also unplayable last year too, um, it's like in a universal role that nets are supposed to be taken down during the winter, that hasn't, hasn't happened two years in a row now. Um, this past summer, the nets were on the ground, I worked at the rec and we actually ended up tying a string, I know events in that focuses on that, because the net failure was so unplayable. Um, the courts are also a liability for sure too, um, I played at Shering Valley Athletic Club and they had courts there that are in much better condition and they can close them off because of stuff like that for them. Um, and so I think those records are just so bad, they really need to be considered doing something with them. Um, I also wanted to bring up, I just spoke with a testing coach, and they put in eight courts with Dinsingian running in three and a half months, um, and so I think the time concern really needs to be looked at too. Um, and then I obviously also would advocate for six courts, whatever, so that's not difficult, so, that's all.
All right. I think we addressed all of those, um, issues and pieces of course, thank you everybody for your, but we really appreciate it. Uh, Ryan, would you like to proceed now with the proposal for the transportation?
Sure.
You don't have a slide with that?
You don't have a slide with that, um, essentially transportation, um, we were looking at it from the same kind of target, target budget for that budget, obviously it would be more or less, I mean, I don't know what we do, the scope for that building, um, like, we had that target budget, it's still just being a folder. The amount of work essentially that goes into it from an architectural and engineering standpoint is approximately five months for the second time. Um, you can be doing your survey and warnings and those things during that process, you know, expedite the streaming process, um, so that you're ready to go away, it's a really, really exciting. Um, the construction period before that building, as soon as it goes through, it'll be somewhere in the middle of the end, anywhere from four to six months, depending on scope, so I think we had some very early conversations with a contractor about the schedule for that, they were assuming the four and a half month for that, with the assumption that they could use some pre-ordering before it. So with any of these types of buildings, the biggest thing that you run into is just the availability of materials to contribute to the project, so, um, if they get approval a month or so earlier, prior to the beginning of construction, very early to start that process of ordering your, not a building or, or some pretty quick, you know, things like that. So, full duration, I mean, if you extrapolate it out, it's that, you know, anywhere from eight to eleven months, you're like, kind of, you know, we should, so, um...
I think, um, first of all, thank you for the update, I know we're not receiving recommendations, trying to move forward with design on that yet, but as I, sorry, I thought it was just for the tennis courts. Oh, sorry. I retract that comment.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I thought you had advised that you were not bringing it forward, so...
That's, that's correct.
You're not bringing it forward?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, Chris and or Dr. Hunt, um, I think we have some money allocated for the design services for the transportation garage in fiscal year twenty twenty, so are you thinking this is gonna come back to the board in the spring?
Yeah, I, I just, I'm getting through the tennis court, that decision.
Okay.
That forward.
And you see what the bids are, really?
Yeah, so to take all, understand the timeline a little bit more, because I think we've targeted with your, the...
Well, that's, that's kind of what's at play.
Kind of going back to that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, and my input is that, um, we may wanna be queued up for summer twenty-one, so we can be thinking about that as optimal, or, you know, be in a position where we're not losing traction on that, so you can help advise on when we would need to start the design if that were the case, and of course, there's contingencies with our funding and our excellent...
Self-reform, is that...
In my, in my opinion, we know it needs to be done, the longer we wait, we risk having put money into it that we're not gonna really recoup, because we have to rebuild the, the transportation garage, so...
I mean, realistically, that's something that you wanna get, willing, probably July, uh, with design.
Okay.
You can do pre-planning, you can do, you don't even need to hire us, but you can get warnings done, survey done, have all that stuff done, and again, warnings will tell you a lot, you know, let you know if you have problems with things of that nature, we'd be happy to look at those.
Okay, so before the end of the fiscal year, if you just revisit, you know, the right time to pull the trigger and that, we'll have some more information at that point too, about our, about our operating revenues.
I, I would like to target just when bids come out of tennis courts.
Yeah.
Do you understand that now, or do you think it makes sense to...
Yeah, I agree, I agree, that makes more sense. Yeah, just, thank you so much, your creativity and your responsiveness has been really amazing, we've been working with you now for over a year, I think.
It's been a while.
Yeah, and...
Please don't, please don't make us. I understand how you feel right now, please don't make us.
No, no, it's, again, if people are asking questions, they don't care, and that's, that's, I appreciate it.
And I've seen, as we've had this conversation over several months, it keeps getting better and better, and I think what we're seeing is stronger, so that's the intent, of course, is to come up with an even, um, better solution than what, than what we started with.
And my biggest thing is always is that pre, so again, if you get those warnings and stuff, that's, that's the stuff that makes everybody stay in there, so...
Now, survey was completed, but do we have any...
He's, he's the chief of finance, in general, he's, he goes out there, does the site investigation, and he has... So, he's getting to have my permission on that, right?
Okay, good.
He's been significantly underbought.
That's good, that's good. Okay, thank you again, Ryan.
Thank you. Great, move to course proposal refinement, um... Yeah. Just, uh...
Oh, I think you can hear it from your mom, she's on the side.
Now it walks out. Uh, just, just a, a little mic for the Board of Education, typically do this in December, because when we come back, we are, um, part of gearing up for scheduling in the following year, uh, we're used to wait on this presentation, but we, uh, we would actually have things, of course, have all the, we haven't seen it for a while, so that's the reason we're gonna do this, so, I'm, I'm, I think we want to prove...
Let me just say thank you for that, it's really nice for us to see it ahead of it, being implemented, let's continue to do that. So I think everyone can hear about this evening really called into our mission, and it's really student-centered, really, um, I was more, our standard, or so. Uh, so the first course that we...
Okay, yes, thank you.
It never went down. Our doors are a little squeaky over there, so... The first course that, um, was associated this evening is one that has been put for training. Um, this course, operated, we're proposing and arranging, is a slightly different, um, take, um, the two existing courses that we have with the AP Music Theory and Advanced Music Theory. Um, this course would still entail some notation, but would give students an opportunity to really be creative in their work, it's often, um, in our discussions over the past few months, been described as self-paced learning is the goal, um, which is one of our big district goals, to investigate self-paced learning. Um, but Nate sees this course as being an opportunity for students to kind of work at their own pace and to be, um, creating their own music along the way. Um, so it seems very exciting, he's hoping to mirror offerings that are currently available at F A Brown and at Hawkins, um, it's very minimal expense-wise, um, in that staffing is not an issue, you'd be able to pick up the course without a problem, um, he already is, um, found that there is, there is a student base that's interested in enrolling in the class, um, and as far as, um, any resources needed, there's some software, these are, um, hosting software that I think is needed, but it's minimal, and he needs more mini keywords, but he's needing to approach the music offers for those, um, but other than that, it's relatively low cost, but I think it will be high interest, and it's very different than the other course to be offering.
He said software liner, is it, is it still available?
I don't know. Do you know the answer to that? I didn't, I could answer it. I have the name of it, you might know, um, what it is. I was gonna ask who's gonna run, who's gonna teach it a lot with another class, is that why there isn't a scheduling track or staffing issue?
Right, and now, um, the scheduled AP Music Theory, Music Theory during the same period, um, and both Mr. Somaski and Mr. Kostski are able to take those currently, so what would happen is we'd be able to double up that, Mr. Somaski, um, AP Music Theory, AP Music Theory joint lead, and then add this to the schedule. Uh, the one thing that the music department has talked about is maybe the need for non-performance based classes for the, um, the net part, because there are a lot of teams that talk about, and they're confused, maybe don't feel comfortable getting up in front of, um, a larger group, which I think, hopefully, we respect and understand. Um, so by being able to, um, to add those, and we look at AP Music Theory and Advanced Music Theory, um, similar to how we would, uh, how we offer our classes, so they're able to differentiate those multiple levels and take those courses, um, especially Advanced Music Theory, multiple years, um, it's, they've been able to, to really be able to differentiate those, because they're able to add that without adding, um, the additional cost to teaching this class.
I think what is very different from this course too, that they kind of honed in on was that, kind of alleviating from it just being, um, continued with oral band and orchestral music, that it has been an opportunity for students to create growth in how to class. The next, um, offering that we're proposing tonight is an environmental science offering, it would be a full-year course, um, primarily for students who are desiring a fourth-year science course, um, but are not interested in an AP offering, primarily offer AP Environmental Science. Um, there is a slight, um, math component to that, that oftentimes will cause students to not enroll in AP Environmental Science, so, um, with this course in mind, Brittany Anderson, who teaches AP Environmental Science, is very excited about designing this curriculum such that it would be more enticing to a student that maybe is not your AP candidate as a senior, that is really interested in the content of the course. Um, she has already started reading textbooks that might be appropriate for the course, and not AP, um, Environmental Science textbooks, um, she also gets touch base with the, um, AP Environmental Science teachers from across the area, we're part of a, an AP collaborative, so it's West, Kene, Henson, Beachwood, Orange, Hudson, Solan, and she's touch base with those teachers, and many of those, um, districts also offer a non-AP version of Environmental Science, and it is just such a timely course that students are very interested in taking that. Um, so they have done quite a few surveys in the science department to see students' interests, so they think the science department feels confident, there will be students that are probably from all of ours. Staffing impact or... We've gone through, because many of our teachers teach at the middle school too, to try to figure out with, because they're graduating classes, so they, they, that we should be able to take something from that without a problem. Um, the next course we've seen before, because we proposed it this time last year, um, we were hopeful that, um, when we applied for the pilot for the OBD, that we'd be selected for round one, unfortunately, we weren't, um, there were other districts that want, were selected, and they judged the open map opportunity for districts to apply for a second quarter, so we're still very interested, Mr. Kostko is still very interested in teaching this course, it would not involve any additional staffing, because it would be a course replacement, it would replace currently what we offer as the application probability. Um, it's really designed as a course, um, that would be high interest for students and would involve a lot of real world application of math skills, um, some interdisciplinary opportunities, so I think that Mr. Kostko is so excited about the possibility, he has touched base with, I think, is it Orange, that is currently in the fourth, um, teacher there, just to make sure that things are on track, um, are as positive as he initially thought, so he's still really excited about making the fourth, so we submitted our application, we're hoping to hear soon, um, so as soon as we hear, we will either put it in the course selection guide, it gets gap to the course selection guide is out, which was our, in the situation last year, we found that we warranted in the next, uh, capital course selection guide is out, we will just let students know that this course is replacing the problem set. So now we move into the phase of, so what's on board for it is moving into twenty twenty-one, um, we're still continuing to figure out about pathways with our calc program, if we want to do something different, we have different tiers, um, writing for students that are kind of more personalized, and there might be some students that might be writing for condensed version of honors pre-calc, A, B, and C, um, possibly over two years instead of three. This idea continues to get presented each year, what is the holdback? I know that, uh, Mr. Moss is hesitant with that, um, I think part of it is staffing too, of making sure we have solid mass of students, so we're not creating them in other...